At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of your heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. Special welcome to the students that are attending this evening from SMSU. So, welcome. The, we'll move to agenda item number two, which would be our recognition of the 2017 Employee of the Year. This was actually awarded at the, an awards program that the city had for city employees. And this individual had a family commitment out of town with a sports team that he's coaching. So, the, so we will be doing the recognition this evening. So, I'd like to ask Corporal Jason Kapinski to come forward. And Sharon, you can perhaps say a few words. Actually, this is the city administrator's selection. So, I'll allow Sharon, as city administrator, to make that presentation. And I'll come around and award you your recognition plaque.
As the mayor mentioned, this award was presented at our annual recognition event, which was held on January 26th, and Corporal Kapinski was not able to attend. But just some background on Corporal Kapinski for those viewing and in the audience. Corporal Kapinski began his career here with the city of Marshall in 1997 as a part-time police officer, and became a full-time police officer in 1999. He has moved up in the ranks and obviously was promoted to police corporal in 2010. He has served the community and his fellow officers in various ways, with different areas of instruction and training. And just some background on this particular award. We seek nominations from fellow employees. And so, for Jason's knowledge, he was selected among his staff and his peers. And I know that meant a lot, a lot to Jason. And so, I just want to point that out as well. So, one of the things I commented at the night of the event was that, you know, a lot of work that police officers do, we may not fully know it completely. There's a lot of community relations work that they do. And then unfortunately, sometimes they have to deal with bad people as well. And, but I think throughout it all, Jason and his service and his dedication to the city of Marshall has meant that his selection as the employee of the year for 2017. And so, I will let the mayor present this to Corporal Kapinski.
We just appreciate the work of all the members of the department. And as a corporal, he's a leader within the department. And, and serving the shape of the role of younger officers. So, we appreciate that. And I think from the staff point of view on the department also believe a little bit that it's also a recognition of the job that everyone on the department does. So, congratulations, Jason, and thanks for the recognition.
Thank you for your service. It's an honor. Thank you.
We will move then to agenda item number three to consider the approval of the agenda. We have the agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would approve, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve the agenda as is presented. Move to vote. The motion passes. We'll operate under that agenda. Agenda item number four. Is considered the approval of the minutes of our last regular council meeting. That was held on January 23rd, 2018. Council does have the minutes of those, of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note?
I move we approve the minutes.
Seconded by Jim, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to vote. Motion passes. We'll note the abstention. Agenda item number five. Agenda item number five is the small city development grant application. We will have a public hearing on the small cities grant application following the public hearing. We will then act on the documents that were, are part of the public hearing. So, with that, we have the representative that will be presenting the public hearing.
Hi, everyone. Jeff Gladys from United Community Action. And I'm basically here tonight to talk about the small cities development application that we would like to put in for the city of Marshall. We had talked about this project a little bit last year. It did not go in on the second round, but this year we submitted it. It made it through the first round. We did some tweaking of the grant application to kind of meet what the Department of Employment and Economic Development was looking to do. So, that's what we've got for the product that we're looking to apply for right now. And as part of the public hearing, there's a few things I need to go over about the grant application and then answer any questions that we have from either any of you or any of the public here tonight. What we're doing with this application is we're going to apply for owner-occupied, low to moderate income housing in the city of Marshall in a targeted area. And we're also going to be applying for commercial rehabilitation funds for the downtown district and an area that stretches a little bit onto West College Drive. And you guys should have gotten a copy of the target areas that we have for that. We are applying for funds through the Department of Employment and Economic Development. What these funds will do is be a portion of the project. So, some of the money is going, if it's, if we're awarded, some of the money will come from DED. I'll make it a little shorter if I can use that acronym. And some of the money would come from matching sources. And then there's, Marshall has some MIF funds that have been sitting dormant for a number of years that came from the same funding source that this, this program is funded through. So, when we apply for these funds, we have to access those funds if they're, if they're sitting there. And so, that's also tied into this grant program. Now, those funds are, are subject to Davis Bacon wage requirements. And one of the things that ties into the DED application is that DED also requires Davis Bacon requirements for the commercial projects. We don't need them on the rental projects. And we can bring that MIF money into the grant on the owner-occupied side without Davis Bacon because of the low to moderate income designation for it. On the owner-occupied side, what we're looking to do is the average grant per house of the small cities and the MIF funds would be a total of $24,000 per project. We're applying for 21 owner-occupied projects. That would be a minimum. I anticipate that we will do more projects than 21. And also on the commercial side, the, oh, those funds are 80% grant, 20% match. The grant funds forgive over 10 years, 10% per year. And that is owner-occupied, as we had talked about before. And that is low to moderate income. Low to moderate income is 80% of area median income or less. On the commercial side, the, the average funds that can go in from small cities or MIF funds would be 35,000. We're looking to do at least 14 commercial projects. And I anticipate that we'll do more commercial projects also because the average of 35,000 per project, I think, will fall under that in Marshall, just from my past experience with grants that we've done in the Marshall area. The, the commercial portion is set up as 60% grant, 10% loan that will come back to the city of Marshall that can be used for further projects down the road. That is a, the loan is a 3% loan that would go out, and that money supplied through DED also. And then 30% matched by the, by the commercial owners. And these matching sources comes from all different areas. The city of Marshall has, is going to have some funds available for commercial owners to borrow that are paid back. These funds were basically generated from previous grants that were like this also. So, we're just continuing to roll that around. That money will come back in and we just continue to, to use it over again. Administration on this project is, for United Community Action, is 15% of the small cities funds and the MIF funds. The matching funds are just, they just tie into the project. So, when it comes down to it, as for a total project, we're anticipating that the, that the owner-occupied side would be $720,000. On the commercial side, we'd be about 700,000. Administration is 75,600 on the, on the owner-occupied side. Administration on the commercial, 73,440. Total grant of $1,569,000 and, well, and 40, and 40. So, that's what our anticipation is, is where the numbers will fall when we're done, when we're done with the project. There is a timeline. We're applying next week is the due date for the second application. As I said, we made it into the second round. We anticipate usually that we find out June if we were funded or not. And then upon finding out if we're funded, then we have to do what's called an environmental clearance. And my agency does that. And then, once we get that done and we get approval from DED, then we can hold a town meeting where we would meet with commercial owners. We'd meet with property homeowners and talk about the program. And that's the official kickoff for the grant. So, we had anticipate that to happen in August. And then, you know, be inspecting, and that's of 2018, and doing inspections starting in September, October of 2018. The projected finish date would be September of 2020. But we would anticipate, we have until December of 2020. We always try to target a few months early. It's a two and a half year process. We've been pretty successful on closing grants early. And that's always our goal to finish three months earlier than, than we need to. So, that's the timeline of the grant. You guys, I hear you got a lot of paper from me. So, there was some target areas in there. And the, on the owner-occupied side, how those target areas are determined is that we've done two city surveys where we went into, we have to target for HUD. HUD wants to see 20 to 25 block areas. So, that's where those target areas came up. Target area A, it's got some funky looks to it. And the reason for that is that's how surveys come back. So, when we surveyed people, we actually did two rounds on each survey last year and this year. And so, we use, we use the big survey to plot them. And then, once we think we've got it narrowed down, we survey again so we can narrow it down again. And that's why we determine target area A and target area B. Yes, Glenn?
Could I just ask a quick question since you have the map up there?
Yep.
The outside boundary there, that's, that's the street, right?
Yeah, or it could go down an alley at sometimes.
So, does it only include, if it goes down the street, does it only include the house on one side of it? Or does it include the house on both sides?
And, and there's, my map is a little better because it's, I can make it a little bigger, you know? But usually, if I have surveys, I do, I take it according to my survey. So, sometimes I'll go down the alley and pick up the other side. And other times, I'll go right down the street. And also depends on what's there. You know, so we might have a park on the other side. So, then I just slide it over. But there are times that I go down the alley. Just, and that, that's when we survey, we stress the importance of that survey because that's how we determine where we're putting these target areas. And so, then that also, when, when people, you know, say, well, how did you pick the target area? Well, that's how we picked it. And everybody in, on the Marshall application here in these areas, we've surveyed them technically four times.
So, if it goes down the middle of the street, both houses on both sides qualify or only on one side?
It would be on one side. So, if it was like in the green area there, it would be to the bottom of it. But I'm thinking, if I look, I've got my rough map here.
So, so the person across the street may not qualify and you do?
Right. Yeah. And we run into that in every community that we work in. Looking at the grant, or the green area, we, I have used both the alley on some and along the edge. But on that top area, a lot of that is commercial and stuff over there. So, we don't have houses over there. And then, on, like on the, on the lower left there, I'm going down alleys and a street. But like I say, it's all based on the surveys because I'm trying to squeeze as many of those interested people into that as I can.
I just didn't want there to be confusion by people saying, my neighbor got it across the street. And I didn't. And that's because they were in the target area.
Yeah. Yeah. And they really make us stick to that target area now. They don't allow us to go citywide unless the community has 1,000 people or less in it. So, yeah.
Jeff, just to follow up on the survey, this is a physical survey going around with clipboard and score sheets in hand?
We mail out. We'll mail out. We use different methods depending on. First time we do a mail out. And it goes, we got self-addressed stamped envelopes. So, we've got the stamp on there and everything. And then, when those come back, we'll either do a second mailing or we'll do door hangers where we put them in plastic bags and hang them on the doors. And I'm believing in Marshall that we use both methods. One time, we did the door hangers and the second time, we mailed out again.
So, on each, each method, you're needing to gather information from the resident before you can enter it into the survey?
Yes. And what we do, and what we're asking mainly is what income range do you fall in? So, we put ranges. How many people in the family? Are you interested in this type of repair program? What are some, what are some of the repairs you'd be interested in? And if you're, and if you're interested and want to be put on our waiting list, put a name and an address on there. So, that's when we, we can plot the income eligible ones on there. And, and we get that. And one of the, one of the things with the survey is that the individuals that fill out the survey, it stated right on there that though, if the grant is received, people that filled out the survey have two months to apply for people before individuals that didn't because it's first come, first served. So, but first come, first served with a stipulation that if you filled out the survey, we're going to, because that's what helps us get these, get these funds, is a strong survey response. Because generally, the number of houses that we're asking for and commercial buildings that we're asking for is way under what we have interest. So, we, you know, like on the commercial side, you know, we're, on the 14 commercial projects, I anticipate that being closer to 18, 19 when we're done. But we've got like 46 interested building owners in that, in that target area that we have on the commercial side. And on the owner-occupied side where we're asking for 21, I anticipate that we'll be closer to that 27 range for houses. We, I think it's 80-some or 90 interested, interested property owners. And generally, you have some dropout, but then you also gain some when people see that others, houses are being worked on and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So, the target areas, you know, and that's a good question by Glenn because we do hear that, you know, where we sometimes across the street, we can't help it. But we're, it truly is based off those surveys. On the commercial side, we are, we've always have to stay in the downtown area unless there is shown that there's no interest outside of the downtown area. And we've got a whole bunch of interest in the downtown area. Because this is, these funds are usually designated towards the oldest parts of the town. And so, that's, and then on the commercial side, I slipped down a little bit on West College Drive because of all the grants that I've done in Marshall. We've never got down to that West College Drive side where we, we have like Arnold's and some of those businesses along there. So, I'm putting that one in there because I thought this would be a really good time to do it with those MIF funds that we're tying in also. Couple other things to cover and then just questions and we're good here. UCAP, which is our United Community Action, formerly known as Western Community Action, recently merged about a year and a half ago, a little under that. We've been doing this, this type of program since the early 1990s. I would have to look back. I've been in them since the early 1990s. I would, did the first one that Western Community Action did. Been involved in every one of the ones that Marshall has had through the years. So, we've got a lot of experience in these. The other thing I need to mention is that all the projects that go through this, this application phase, if we're funded, are submitted to the state historic preservation office. And they have to give us their blessing. Marshall does have a few buildings that are of interest to the state historic preservation office. Some of those would be like the First National Bank downtown, the Addison Building, the Atlantic Hotel, the Marshall Hotel. So, projects like that have a potential where SHIP-O, another short acronym, could actually tell us what type of products we can or can't use on those. Most of the other projects though, 95, excuse me, 95% of our projects, we don't have any interest from SHIP-O. So, which always makes it easier on us. So, and then, if we do have one of those letters that comes from SHIP-O, then they have certain standards that we go through and we, we handle all that. We get it into them, get their blessing before we move on. The one thing that we're including too with this tonight is we have a conflict of interest form. And we'll be looking at having this go through because we, we have James Luzinski, who is a contractor in Marshall. He has the requirements that, that we need for small cities development projects. He has worked on projects for us in previous grants and in areas around here. He's working in other communities right now. So, one of the things we're going to designate right away is that we have a potential conflict of interest. We'll, we'll work with Dennis and Sharon on that. And we'll submit that to DED for their ruling on that as to whether Jim will be able to bid on any of the projects or not. So, that were also is one of the forms that, that went, went out also. And other than that, those are the things they want me to cover. I don't know if there's any more questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions the council has as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, Jeff, you said that the, that the income is low to moderate. And that was the definition. You said 80% of the median?
Area median income.
Which is just the area of Marshall city limits, Lyon County?
Lyon County. So, what they'll do is it'll be a per county. And, you know, so, the, what we tend to see is a range between 20% and 80%. Because we'll, we'll run into some really depressed incomes too, where they're down in, you know, that 30% area median income when I'm talking, you know, $10,000, $12,000 a year. On the, I'm going to say on top end, 35,000 for a family of one. And then it goes up about 4,500 for each additional member, somewhere right in there. It varies county to county. But we do, I think, I was talking about this the other day. We have a large number of applicants that are interested that were under $30,000. I think I have, if you guys got to read all of the application, I have that figure in there because it was a big number. Glenn, you might have it handier than I have it.
Are you talking the income ones?
Yeah.
I have that, yeah.
Yeah, because didn't we have like 30-some or?
Oh, I was going to ask you about that. It's for Renville County. So, it would be, is that the one you're talking about?
Renville County has a little lower, would probably be a little lower area median income than Marshall, or than Lyon County, I'm sorry.
Steve, did you have any other question?
No, sir.
I have a few.
Yep, that's fine.
Again, there, there are no income restrictions on commercial property owners receiving the SCDP funds, correct?
Correct.
But, but there is income-based requirements for the residential.
Yes.
And I, I like income-based because I, I think it's, it's good for government to help out poor and, and low-income families. But I question whether government should be giving handouts to individuals and businesses that have the financial means to pay for improvements themselves. And we may have, end up with situations where people are getting this government money that they really don't need it. That they, they have the financial means to make the improvements without the assistance of government money.
And what, you know, what we run into mainly with, you know, Marshall's a little stronger area than, than a lot of communities that we work in because, you know, the size and stuff. But usually, you're, you know, in talking, I've talked to one building owner and they're, they're operating at their same rents that they were charging a number of years ago. And the downtown areas seem like, and that's why it's concentrated downtown, is the downtown areas are, you know, more, they have that trouble, more trouble keeping the doors open, you know, with your big box stores and things like that. So, it is, it is, I understand what you're saying, Glenn. And, but that is why they, they designated to a downtown and trying to keep a downtown viable.
I think on the preliminary form, you had 35,000 per unit. And then was that changed to 40,000 on the application?
40 is a max.
And that's what's on the application?
Yeah. So, the max is 40 though.
And it's per unit. And I was just wondering, how did the, per unit versus per building? What's, is, is a building considered the unit or are there more units per building? Or how do you do that?
Each building is according to their property description. So, if you would look at, let's just take the Addison Building where there's three businesses in there. But there is distinct different building in there. So, if that would have been one owner, which it has different owners right now, one owner could have actually applied for three, as long as it's, as it's got its own building description that's recorded with the county.
Of the SCDP funds, is it that 85.72% of them are forgiven then?
On the, on the?
Commercial?
Commercials. And what that is of the SCDP funds, yes, correct. That's, I had to come up with that. That's, I had to come up with that goofy deal because I had to meet this, the 60, 10%, 30%.
And, and that's the six sevenths. That's how you got that?
Yeah, that's one seventh of that, rounded to the nearest.
So only one seventh of it would be actually paid back then of that money?
One seventh is paid back, 30% they come up with. So there's a 40% project coming from the commercial, from the commercial owners. And, you know, and we discussed too that the Davis Bacon wage requirements come, so that ties a little bit into it too.
In, in your information, you said that the, you mentioned the city owned hotel. And it's included in the survey and I assume it's included in the 70.1% of the target area that's substandard.
Yeah, I might have even rated that one dilapidated. I think I had one dilapidated and that might be the one. In fact, it is the one, so.
But, but that's, I just, that wouldn't skew the survey results because we don't, we intend to do something with that building ourselves, the city not, not getting funds for that.
Yeah, that would be the one project. And normally what we'll do, what we do on the commercial side, because I think we had this discussion before is that Marshall, it, it isn't that the downtown is, is, looks terrible, but it has a number of owners that are interested in repairing things in their building. And generally what we look at is if they have two or more things that they're interested in doing. It could be a roof that isn't visible, or it could be handicap accessibility, or it could be energy improvements. Or, you know, it could be tuck pointing, things like that. So that's how we do that rating on that when it gets to substandard. And like I said, we had the large number that we're interested in participating.
Certainly one of the reasons I'm asking these questions is because I'd like to know. But I, I also think these are things that the general public should know about the use of the funds here and, and that's why I'm asking some of these questions.
Yep, that's fine.
I think in your application, it mentioned one of the banks in the target area and they would rather see other businesses in downtown have access to it. But under the guidelines that we have, with that bank, which I assume is owned by a, a large corporation, they would qualify for the funds?
They could. We, we generally, I, I have not, the only bank buildings I've participated in since I started back in the early 90s are ones where a different business is in a bank building that they purchased. I haven't had a bank participate in a commercial project.
And you indicated that 77,000 of 3% low interest loans would be available. That, that's total, not per building, that's?
That's total, yeah. And those funds all come back to Marshall.
At our January 9th meeting, the, the city council voted to terminate Minnesota investment funds, the revolving loan funds.
Yep.
And we did so because we were told that because of the prevailing wage laws, the Davis Bacon prevailing wage requirements, that it really wasn't worth it for some businesses to apply for that money because it would add so much cost to the construction by paying these higher wages. Is that something we're going to run across with your loans that because they have to pay prevailing wage rates on the commercial property, that it makes it so much more expensive that it's really not worth?
And depending on, and that's why, depending on the type of work they do, what you'll see is roofing rates tend to be closer to what we're paying, but it depends on the work that you choose to have done. So I think Glenn, I gave you a copy of a Davis Bacon from, was it from Renville County? And you see how the, the rates vary and you have to add that rate plus the fringe benefits. And, and that's one of the reason too that we moved, in the, in the older commercial grants that we did, the Davis Bacon wage rates weren't as high as they are now. And so in the old grants, we used to do 34% match, 33% loan, 33% grant. Well, as Davis Bacon started creeping up, it didn't make sense for property owners to tap into the commercial side. That's why Deed said, make more of your, your funds forgivable over the seven years. So that's why that has went from 33% up to the 60%.
And, and maybe one of the reasons that it's more worthwhile for business owners or building owners here to do it is because under the other one, they have to pay back the loan and here there, a certain amount of the money is being gifted to them.
Right.
And that would make a difference in the economics.
Yeah, so it went from 33% to 60 that forgives over seven years. Now if they sell the business, or sell the building, those funds, there's a remainder that will have to come back. Anytime any one of these that would be sold prior to its term coming over, that money comes back into Marshall. And then it's, then it gets re-loaned out in the same purpose that it was brought in. Well, the same purpose of the grant. So we could do either commercial or owner occupied with it.
And in the resolution that we're going to be asked to vote on tonight, it's identifies the downtown area as a slum and blighting area. And I think it said 70.1% of the building, downtown buildings are substandard. I, I wonder if it's hard to attract businesses to downtown if, if they believe it's a slum area.
Right. And that's, that's a deed, that's a deed term. I wish they would change it, but it's, you know, and when we talk about substandard, we're talking about two items or more that need, that, that need to be prepared or that need to be rehabbed on that building, you know, significant type of structural or energy or HBAC or like, you know, so that's how we, but slum and blight is a federal designation. We're either low to moderate income or slum and, slum and blight.
The, if, if there are too many applicants for the commercial loans, I, I, are you saying it's first come, first served for them too?
And the surveys, surveys come into effect, but we have, like I said, we have 46 businesses. So I'm guessing that those applications will come in very quickly. I do anticipate more than 14 though, because they, that $35,000 average, I don't think that for small cities funds, I don't think will hit that just from past experience. So I'm, like I say, I think we're going to be closer to that 18, 19 projects.
What I was wondering is, is there any way that it could be set up that those buildings in most need of repair have a higher priority? To me, it would make more sense to lend it to those that need it the most rather than first come, first served.
Right. And what we would have to, well, we have to designate that in our preliminary application on how we're going to have those funds go out. So that's what we do is, is we have it. We specify that it's going to be first come, first served with that exception of the ones that fill out the surveys. So we bring the surveys in. So I, I know what you're saying. But for the, to get the grant application in and to draw the surveys that we need, it, it might be tougher to judge that because someone could say, my roof is worse than your roof. Or my storefront is worse than your roof. And then it comes into so much judge, you know, so many judgment things that first come, first served has been something, you know, and when we talk about first come, first served, there's, there's requirements of these building owners, both on the owner occupied side and on the commercial side, to get, get their stuff in. We give them a list. This is what we need. And how fast they act on that determines whether they, whether they get in on the, on the grant or not.
In the target areas like A and B up there, do a certain percentage of the homes have to be substandard for it to be the target area or?
I'm mainly in that. I'm looking more for survey response.
For numbers.
Yes. I want to, I want to see about a 20 to 25 block area and I want to encompass the most surveys that I can in that, like I said, that's why they get so funky looking. But it's very successful when it comes time to, to do in the grants. We get the money spent and it gets out there, so.
With regard to the income guidelines, it talks about number of people in the household. Do the people in the household have to be related? Is there any requirement that they be related? Or could it be anybody that's, that live in there?
The, it's, well, it could, whoever's living there, but if they're 18 or older, their income counts. So you have to figure all the eligible income in the household.
But they wouldn't necessarily have to be related?
Not necessarily.
Back to you Glenn. There may be others that want to be part of the public hearing. Craig, you had a?
Yeah. Could you explain just a little bit more Jeff, what's, what's eligible work? I know you hit on some of the energy things, you know, like with the downtown business and, and the HVAC things, but also on the, on the owner occupied structures? Kind of what are some of the target things, work that you see being done for the good of, of the people that mostly that are, are watching or listening online?
So on the owner occupied side, the main things that we see are roofs, siding, doors, windows, you know, and then we can also tie into furnace systems, electrical upgrades. We see waste lines, so plumbing waste lines. Those are the biggies. And generally what we see is it's a lot of big ticket items like that. So there's not many little things that get done because, you know, the little things are kind of a, you try to be a maintenance thing, but you know, as you get to the bigger ticket items, that's where those incomes struggle to try and, you know, do a roof nowadays when it could easily run $10,000 or more dollars. On the commercial side, it's, it's a lot more where roofs again, storefronts are a biggie and tuck pointing in some cases. But you know, there again, you see the HVAC systems, exterior windows. And I think, you know, there's probably some interest in accessibility too in the Marshall area as long as it can be reasonably done.
And thank you. And you talked about energy. So would windows and insulation count as two separate or are both of those energy in one?
They could both. They'll, they'll each have their own specification because that's obviously another thing. Is that insulating, insulating a building is an energy upgrade. You know, we can do, we can do code issues too. You know, and I, but energy and windows, windows could go either way. They could be a structural or an energy.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
Just one more quick question.
Yep.
You have both the residential and the commercial together.
Yep.
Is there any way that the applications can be separate? The residential could be one application, the commercial is a separate one, or do they have to go together?
Commercial can't stand on its own. Commercial has to go in with a rental or residential application. So a commercial cannot be submitted on its own. Owner occupied could be submitted on its own. Or a rental because, and we don't have a rental portion in this grant. We had talked about it, but the funder recommended not to put rental into it. So I shied away from it, I guess when funders tell you that. So you could have a rental and a commercial and you could have an owner occupied and a rental, but you can't have a commercial on its own.
Any member of the audience here wish to speak as part of the public hearing? Or is there any other input from the council as part of the public hearing?
I move we close.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll note the abstention. The second action then would be considered the approval then to submit the Small Cities Development Program Grant Application?
I'll make a motion to submit the grant application.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by David. Discussion?
As I indicated before, I have, I have a couple of concerns. One is that the, the commercial properties are not, they, are not income based in that individuals that are, are wealthy or have ample financial means to, to pay for improvements themselves are going to get a government handout here. And I'm in all in favor of helping poor and low income families make necessary improvements to their house. But I, I don't think that the government needs to be giving money to those that have the means and ability to, to finance things themselves. So that would be one of my main concern and I think, I'm going to say one more thing here.
While you're thinking about that, any other discussion on the motion?
Anyway, that's probably my main concern is that I would, I would like to vote for providing grant money and, and low income loans and grants to low and, and low income families, but I, I, like I said, I, I'm concerned about giving money to the owners of commercial property. And it's, I also am concerned about the first come, first served. It's not, those that are going to receive the money may not be the most deserving. And I'd rather have a standard where those most in need have the most financial need and have buildings that need the most repairs would have higher priority than those that just apply first. And so I do have concerns with the first come, first served part of it, so.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, the motion on the table is to approve the, submit all of the Small Cities Development Grant Application. I will ask us to move to a vote. Motion passes. And then the third action would be the number of documents that would accompany the grant application. They include the Program Income Plan, the City and Marshall Local Government Application Resolution, the Citizen Participation Plan, the Tennessean Warning, the Conflict of Interest Form, the Commercial Slum and Blight Resolution, the Drug Free Workplace Policy, the Excessive Force Policy and the Competitability Policy and the Anti-Displacement Policy. I think I got them all right, Jeff.
That's a lot, yeah.
So, David?
Can I ask Jeff a question about all these supporting statements? They're required as, as part of the process of seeking the grant. I'd be curious, do you know if those are mostly federal mandates or state?
HUD through, channeled through the state, so most of them are HUD. And then most of the, the articles that you guys have there are all templates that we've received from the funding source where they say, this is what we want you to have in there. So we generally take those, put in, you know, cut and paste what we need to and put them in there. And those are all requirements that we have to, to meet federal HUD guidelines, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Craig?
Thank you. Rob, to you, the, the, the excessive force document, that's obviously nothing new to our police department for the record, correct?
No, that's a post mandate. I don't know exactly which one he's got, but we've got one. A policy that all the worlds of Minnesota utilize that are based on that policy, so.
Jeff, are you aware of that policy?
Yeah, and if they want, and what we could do is if we have this one, we could attach the one that's existing for the police force and we could send that right in with the two.
I'd appreciate that, just to make sure that we're consistent, that we're not doing some kind of a blind side to our PD.
No, because this is basically just for the grant.
Got it. I understand. Thank you.
I'll make a note of that though.
Thank you.
So any, any other questions?
Just, just for the record, so the 15% fee that your organization will be charging will total about $148,000 then?
Um, let me see, over two and a half years?
About $149,000, I guess. $149,000?
Yep. Right in that area. Yes. $149 and $40. And with that, basically I keep two very experienced staff on this project pretty much through there along with, with myself. And we have other part-time work that goes into that too from, I shift my inspector's time.
That, that's the maximum fee that you can charge?
15 of the, the SCDP money. And then for the matching funds, it's, that just, so when you probably figure it out, if you took the, what we're getting and divided, excuse me, by the 1.569, we're probably closer to 11% somewhere in there.
Now, is, is that percentage, the 15%, is that comparable to what other organizations would charge then?
Yep. What Deed, HUD allows Deed to pull 20% admin. Of that, they make 15% available to us.
Okay. Just one, two more things and one is I want to thank you for everything you've done. You've, you've done a great job of explaining things and, and getting together with us and, taking the time to explain things to us. I, I really appreciate that. You've done a very nice job. I appreciate that. The other comment I would make is that as a member of the city council, I, I have a hard time passing a resolution by the city council that describes our downtown area as slum and blight. I, I don't feel like our downtown area is slum and, and blight. And so I have a hard time voting for that resolution.
So we do not have a motion on the table. I would entertain a motion for the supporting documents.
I'll make a motion to include the supporting documents with the addition. I'll make a motion to include the supporting documents with the addition or change regarding the, it was the excessive force policy.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Discussion on the motion? I would just echo what has been said, Jeff, in that the, thank you for your patience, your thoroughness in your presentation as well as your work on this project.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just like to add in there, just for everybody else's benefit, Jeff is very well-known in this area. He's, he covers a very wide range. I don't know how many counties you're in right now and doing this, but he's, he's considered an expert by deed in this area. So he's very experienced and knows how to handle all of these. He's a few years on it.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Any other discussion on the motion, Steve?
Mr. Mayor, the, with regards to Councilmember Bear Kohler's comments, I too disagree with slum and blight, but it's a federal thing, not a state thing, not a city thing. Likewise with the picking and choosing, first come, first served, everything, we have to do what's best for the city. And sometimes, unfortunately, we have to take the bad with the good, and it may not be the best way that we like it, but when the state and the fed make the rules, we have to play by them.
Other discussion on the motion?
Just one more comment. I would support this if it were just residential, but if, with the residential and commercial, with the commercial included, I just can't support it.
With that, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Move then to Agenda I of Number Six.
You're in a lot of trouble, bud. What did you do? You went down over here.
Okay, so we're back on line. The Agenda I of Number Six is the Consent Agenda on the screen. We'll bring up the items on the Consent Agenda, which include approved the Merit Center lease with the Department of Public Safety for the performance of commercial drivers, licensed skills testing, consider the authorization to purchase a radio booster for the Merit Center, consider the authorization for the approval of the Marshall Police Department City and Marshall Emergency Management Plan, and to apply for the hazardous material emergency planning grant funds for the State of Minnesota Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, consider the temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license from Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the Consent Agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? Number seven. Is there any other item? Not, I will entertain a motion for the remaining items on the Consent Agenda.
So move.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda I of Number 10? Steve?
Yeah, I was going, Glenn, okay.
On this, on this lease, what I was wondering is, under the, we approved this lease last year, and I think one of the provisions in the lease was that if we didn't do anything, it would automatically renew for a one-year period. So do we have to do anything? Doesn't it automatically renew for one year?
We, I agree that we did say that, but they sent me the lease and asked me to renew it, and just in consultation with format in terms of council approval, I thought it the appropriate thing to bring it before you. So yes, it, it's virtually the same lease, and that was there, but just thought we'd bring it up for review. And one of the, it's a small thing. We're optimistic to receive state funds for the expansion of the track, and there's, you know, if we're aware of that, we, we did have discussion with them that we'd be working on them, that if it does happen during this year, we'd work with them to keep it going. But, but yes, I just, they, I thought, I thought it a better thing to do to bring it back to council, but yes, we did, you did approve it for renewal.
And so other than the dates, there's no other changes?
None.
And that was, when, when we were first negotiating this back to bring the, the CDL testing back into Marshall, this is to satisfy the requirement of the state that they want a fresh contract regularly just to make sure that they have all of it dotted. So we're doing this for their benefit, not for ours.
Right.
I think one of the provisions of the old lease which would stay is that unless we give them 30 days written notice, it automatically goes for another year. So one of the things, if, if next year we don't intend to renew it, we, we need to get it and give notice before the 30-day period. Otherwise, it'll be another year.
Yes.
And the other question I have is with regard to the amount. Are, are we looking at changing the rent amount? Or, I mean, how long is it going to stay at the $125 per month?
As long as you approve it, is, is the long answer. I mean, we're, we're seeing more, starting to see more, I'll tell you, the classroom, if you look at the schedule on the Merit Center, that is, has become very busy to where now it's trying to get people in. The track isn't there yet, but it's being more busy. I was out there the other day and saw school buses out there practicing, driving on it. So we're hoping to develop more utilization for it. There is more than there was a year ago, and now with Training Coordinator out there, we're, we're anticipating it. But part of it is the, the balance between accessibility and affordability and, and revenue and.
Rob, if I could, if I could add to, maybe help answer Glenn's question too, is that i, if we go back and revisit why we ended up here in the first place needing to negotiate this, the examiners were using public streets, and in order to have areas that were suitable but less traffic, they were infringing between the industrial park and residential developments. That generated a number of complaints, both from residences and from folks in the industrial park. That caused us to, the city, to pull what I would call the permit, which really isn't a permit, but it was a verbal agreement to the driver's license exam station that they used the path they were using. The problem comes into play is that wherever they give the test, that's where the trainers like to have their students practice. So we did this to alleviate the training pattern that develops from the exam station. They still use the same path for passenger vehicles. I'm one of the test points in front of my house, so sometimes to confuse the students, we park a vehicle there. So just, so that was one of the reasons why we agreed to do this and to make it almost free. The state didn't want it free. We were willing to make it free because this is a service to all the people that pay for that out there already, and it was doing us a favor getting that traffic off of the street. So honestly, we would have, we would have agreed to do this without a fee.
That helped a lot that you explained it. I really appreciate that. That's, that's good information for all of us to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one, one other thing is again, the importance in having it available in Marshall. You know, in the past, we've had streets where the streets were constructed and in place and very low use, and their preference was real streets, and, and they haven't minded free on the streets, but in other areas. But we didn't have any of those available, and they in fact, for a while, had discontinued having CDL testing.
This actually, if you remember, originated with complaints to both Councilman Lozinski and myself. Commercial businesses in Marshall that require employees to take CDL exams, we're having to send this, the, the candidate a vehicle, and because of the laws for someone who is only using a, a learner's permit for CDL, that meant a trainer, and they were going to Jackson and Wilmer to take those tests. And, and a strong Marshall business presence. So that was the other piece of that, that, that's crazy, and we're not going to keep doing that if, you know, and so that's how we got to this agreement.
Right.
Any other questions about this lease agreement? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So, second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda I of Number 11. Agenda I of Number?
Now, that one is, is mine, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My question is, tell me about this radio, Rob. What, it's a training center.
Yes.
We don't need a full radio, in my opinion.
It, it is two things beyond just a training center. Well, first, it's also our Emergency Operations Center, and that's probably the role in which it's most crucial to have in-building communications. And I can tell you, in multiple locations, using a portable like I've got, which is the standard, for among all responders, responders in our region, you get very poor reception. And so what this does is enhance the signal throughout the building, which in an emergency, they did an exercise while I was in Chicago, using it as a training experience, exercise for Emergency Operations Center. And everyone, they ended up having to set up the mobile communications truck that's housed there because everyone's communication was so bad. And frankly, already had been aware of that, but that really highlighted the need to bring this in to improve the communications. The second thing is that some, a major part of our target audience is public safety, and ideally, they're not monitoring their radios continuously during a class, but during breaks, during, you know, sometimes, especially locally, we'll have people on call while they're in training, so we ask them to monitor their radios, and they can't. And even the windows, one of the things that surprised me, because I'm thinking, we'll sit by the window, well, the new windows are designed to be energy efficient, so they're actually even worse than the concrete walls in terms of radio penetration. So, so this is something that would help us overcome this.
Craig?
Yeah, and that's absolutely perfect, Rob. And the other part of that too, Steve, is that this is actually three of three enhancements that we did out there, both as, as training, but also to use as an Emergency Operations Center. And the other two things that we've done is we've enhanced the, the Wi-Fi capabilities for being able to have a lot of things going on through Wi-Fi, and then also cellphone booster, because that suffered just like the 800 megahertz radios did. So there's, there's three pieces out there to make that building really extremely functional. And, and while it seems like a lot of money, you know, the $11,385 for the booster, each one of those portable radios is $52 to $5,600 for just the radio alone. So it's a lot of money, but in the technology piece of that, that's, that's really pretty cheap. And then the other part of it is, is that because we've become so wireless, if we had to have set that EOC up five years ago, we would have still been looking at hardwiring all of the data pieces in, and with the Wi-Fi and, and with our technology expert back on the control panel there, we've been able to do all the things we needed to do utilizing the, the modern technology and have actually saved a lot of money because we delayed a little bit doing it.
It says here, one quote was obtained from Western for Communications. Is that the only quote that we got?
That is.
Why do we only get one quote for something?
Well, it's one of those things, potentially, we might have found a second one, but all of our radios are Motorola provided within Lion County and I think pretty much within our radio board. They purchased the same radio through the same supplier. It's Motorola, and Motorola has designated sales areas, and for us, that's this company out of Wilmer. The next closest one is Mankato. I know there's Johnson &amp; Johnson in Worthington down there, and they're out of Iowa, and I, I don't think this has to be Motorola specific. We could have probably contacted Worthington for a price, but the two things, the one is we, we have the relationship, we know the reliability, and frankly, he didn't, he came down while he was doing some other stuff in Marshall, so they did the wadded of the building, and that just sort of as an aside. So they, it isn't just a paper bid, that's what the 17,000 was. This is, they came down with different reception monitors and went through the whole building and analyzed where the strengths and the weaknesses are. So they, and they gave us some guidance on the cellphone booster. We're going to actually have to add a second antenna and do some tweaking on that because of the assessment that they did. So that's part of what we got. So it's, it's not totally sole provider, but it's, it's sort of close.
So they're also under state contract, and that's part of the area breakout?
Yes, the supply is our, our state contract supplies.
They are the lowest price?
I, I'm comfortable we wouldn't get a better price.
My, my only concern, and this is just for standard of doing things, is a single bid is always not a good idea.
And I understand.
Because if somebody wants to, last time I checked, radio waves go to the radios in the program. I can buy a Panasonic radio or a Sony radio, and they'll pick up radio waves equally.
They're, yeah, I'm not an expert. On this, on this, you're right.
Yeah.
With, with, and, and there is an APCO 25 standards where there's supposed to be interoperability among different brands, but virtually everyone, I mean, when we went to buy our radio regional board, of which Marshall is a member, did the specifications, and everyone went with Motorola, partially to have that seamless interoperability. So theoretically, they could, but again, I can tell you, every department that I know of in the area, police and public safety are using the Motorola.
Isn't this something our contractor and architect should have caught or anticipated? This surely is not a new issue for either one of them.
We, I don't know that we emphasize that as much, and to be honest, I didn't realize that we would have the deficiencies that we would, like with the windows and that, that's newer technology. But we didn't specify to have that capability. And yes, ideally, if we had said this is going to, because we did say this is going to be an EOC, they put in extra wiring and access to a generator for it. But on the other hand, we didn't say we need to have radio and cellphone.
I'm not sure how much of the burden would have fallen upon you or the city specifically, rather than the folks, the hired professionals who specialize in this kind of work, who maybe should have anticipated that consideration.
All right. Sure, can you have a point?
I just want to comment on that because we've had some experience with amplifiers and, and pipe stone. And we also did install them in our courthouse and other facilities because our armor radios did not work. And even though it seems like you would want to build that into it, you don't want to overbuild or underbuild, so a lot of the testing would be done after the construction is completed to see what would be the bare minimum of, of boosters needed for the facility. And just one other comment too, from Councilman Meister, that was a question I asked Chief Yant on the second quote, and I'm, I'm in support of always seeking out a second quote and questioning that. And this one here, I, I did let go just because of the interoperability, but I do think we want to strive towards ensuring we get more than one.
I appreciate it.
A question that council brought up in, in reviewing the, the actual quote, it shows a total taxable amount of 84.60 and 20 cents, but there's no tax?
Correct. There would be no tax, I guess.
Is it, I mean, don't we pay ta, sales tax and then go for rebate? No? It's not considered, and it's not considered construction equipment because it's, it's materials, right?
We typically don't.
We don't. Contractors.
Some from the state, sales tax.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to be clear on that before we went forward.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, it's more for you, Carolyn. There's still money left in the construction fund?
Yes.
So, this is covered under the construction fund of the Merritt Center?
Yes.
I mean, there is not only construction fund, but there's operating funds that we get to cover the operations of this facility.
Yes.
Yes.
So, with that, is there a...
I would move authorization.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Agenda number 12. Agenda number 12 is consider the approval of the amendments in 2018. Wage schedule with us tonight is Sheila Dubbs, Human Resources Director. Sheila?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Um, I think Scott is gonna co-present with me tonight, so I'll start this out, and then he will go further into detail. Uh, staff have evaluated the organizational structure and the job duties for the employees within the Community Services Division, and we are recommending some amendments. Um, in your background materials, I've included organizational charts, job descriptions, and a proposed wage schedule. This proposal does include a change in reporting relationships for two positions, a title change for one position, changes in pointings, and corresponding pay range changes. Um, we have met with the Personnel Committee on the proposal, and the committee did vote unanimously to recommend approval to the City Council. Um, at this point, I'll turn it over to Scott, but I'll be off to the side and happy to answer any questions, uh, once he has finished with his explanation.
Thank you, Sheila. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. As I shared with the Personnel Committee, after, uh, reviewing our organizational chart over a 15-month period, and then, um, having a retirement within our staffing, it gave me the opportunity to take, take a look at our organizational structure from an efficiency standpoint, and, um, a reporting standpoint, and a supervisory standpoint. Three positions initially, um, were, were affected by our review that we took a, a really close look at, and those are in front of you tonight. I'll answer specific questions to the job descriptions in regards to changes, um, if you have those at this time.
Thank you, Scott. Questions?
With regard to the, the actual job descriptions, they, they're the same as they were before, as far as for each position?
They are not, they, what you have in front of you are revised job descriptions.
They're, they're the ones that you're recommending changed?
That's correct.
They're not what they were a week ago, or whatever?
What they are today, no.
Okay, 'cause I, I was wondering about that, because normally, when you do that, you give us the old and the new, and the new is, you show us what's changed, because when I looked at this, I assumed that the job descriptions were the same, because I only had one.
Yeah, I have redlined versions, if you'd like to see those.
But that's usually helpful, and usually, it's a packet where you have them both, so we can make a comparison.
Yeah, it was my request that you see the revised job description.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it is always useful to, to see both, 'cause then, then we, 'cause when I looked at it, I thought, well, the job descriptions are the same, why are we changing anything? And, uh...
Well, based on the pointing, the job descriptions would have had to have changed.
Well, it could be, and that was, that was, I was gonna ask, is if the job descriptions are the same, why would the pointings be different? And, and what you're telling me is that the job descriptions did, in fact, change.
Yes. That's what the 15-month review showed, so...
The, um, you know, my first reaction was, um, when I went through it and added up the points, and I, I looked at the points that we now have for the three positions, total to 813 points, and with the new positions, it's 851 points. So, even though basically the three people will be doing somewhat the same jobs, uh, they're getting more points for doing the same work that was done before. And that was a concern of mine, that all of a sudden, we're going from 813 points to 851 points, even though I would assume the same work is being done. I, I then went to the actual wage rates, and then that was better news, because when I looked at the, the actual dollar amounts being spent, uh, because, um, I took the hourly rates for the minimum and maximum in the salary scale, and multiplied them by 52 weeks for 40 hours a week, and came up with what their total compensation would be for salaries, and the maximum would go from like 186,800 to 187,300, which is about a $600 difference. So, uh, I was expecting bigger numbers, and, uh, the, at the lower rate, at the minimum rate, it's like 457 dollars. So, um, I think people would sometimes wonder, well, all of a sudden, you're changing the job descriptions, people get paid more, and more government money is being spent on it, but when I did the analysis, it looks like we're, we're pretty much coming out where we were before. I mean, uh, $500 difference in a yearly salary is, is not that much. So, um, when you, when you did do the salaries and the per hour salaries, it, it looks like it all kind of evens out, so it, it's really not a big dramatic change, is that right, Sheila? Yeah.
And that's also what's in the summary information, or there, this has been reviewed by the Personnel Committee. Comments from the Personnel Committee?
What we did at the Personnel Committee is, a lot of these questions that Councilman Bearcole is bringing up, we did bring up. Um, the job descriptions are radically different, as are the capabilities, with some of the retirements. Um, perfect example is the media specialist back there. Um, the capability that we have, and I'm gonna comment it on my comments upcoming, but the capabilities that we have with the personnel sitting in that position now, and the equipment that we have, is leaps, bounds, and exponentially different, on worlds apart, actually, from what we had from the previous person. We, you can't pay enough for that, really. So, and if you want to continue, you got good people in it, and keep good people in the position, we have to pay them accordingly. So, I think that we did our due diligence in the Personnel Committee, and got a lot of the information, asked a lot of the tough questions, and I think that Scott and Sheila did a great job of it, so I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, and I would, I would concur with, with what Dr. Meister said, and I'll even say that I'm gonna address a little bit more of that also in my individual items, comments, too, but, um, we spent, this was one of the longer Personnel Committee meetings we had, because there was a lot of discussion about where we're at with this, and, um, and I agree, I think this was, was very thought, well-thought-out, and, and I think it's a good recommendation.
I just have, uh, two comments here. One is, um, one of the reasons I bring this up at this meeting is because, again, I want the public to know what's happening, and, uh, they don't attend your Personnel Committee meetings, and it is helpful when, when you bring forth this information and explain, this is why it was done.
Yeah.
Because I think the perception sometimes is with the public, that you're just changing job descriptions to give pay increases to certain employees, and they need to know that there's a rationale for these changes. There's a reason the point system is changing for these employees, there's a reason their pay rate is changing, and, like I say, I, uh...
I think questions are very good.
Yeah, a lot of times, uh, like I said, people aren't informed as to what's going on behind the scenes, and, and both of you tonight with your comments, that's helpful when you, you give that background information so that the public knows what's going on.
Sure.
And, uh, the, the last comment I would have is, it, it says about budget savings of 24,855. Would, would that be because the person who retired was at the higher end of the salary schedule, and, and that's how you came up with the 24,000 in savings?
Right, and there were some supervisory, um, there were some supervisory roles that that person, um, had in their job description that were removed, so...
Well, thank you very much.
Any other questions for either Scott or Sheila?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to accept the wage schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Agenda number 13. Agenda number 13 is, uh, consider the, uh, resolution that would order the preparation of the report on the improvement for Saratoga Street reconstruction, Marguerite Avenue and South Bend reconstruction project, and Michigan Road, um, and Superior Road reconstruction project. With that, I will, um, turn to Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. We'll just show you the project areas that we intend to, uh, bring under construction for 2018. Uh, this is the first one of Saratoga Street from essentially just east of the river, um, west of College Drive, all the way down to Southview Drive. The project is intended to be split into two sections just for, um, traffic control and, and access during the project. C Street is the, uh, separation location, and when we had our, uh, public informational meeting recently, we had about 30 people attend, it was a good turnout, and one of the comments, or a couple of the comments, were, um, on our, on our scheduling of the project, uh, we had intended to do the south part first and the, and the northwest part second, and because of the school's input and other considerations, uh, we have changed that to, uh, doing the northwest portion first and the south part second. Uh, and in doing that, we also had discussions with several residences along the route, and we established, um, the desire, or found the desire for individual meetings with individual concerns along that route. So, for instance, uh, we wanted to meet separately with, after this general meeting, with Schwan's, the YMCA, the Fire Department, the library, the school, okay? And then, also with any major, um, owners, landowners along there, the apartment buildings next to the river, uh, car owns, uh, we have a couple of apartments on the corner, on the curve, that we'd like to, we're meeting with them individually as well. And then we did invite anyone after the meeting that has any concerns at all to call, email, stop up and see us about, about any concerns they might have. We talked about, uh, the need for accessibility to homes, uh, along there that may have handicap access issues, uh, garbage service, uh, mail service, those types of things. So, uh, I'm, I'm kind of giving you some of this input that applies to all of our projects, but this was the first one that we've had a public informational meeting on. We will be having public informational meetings of all the projects, so, and when we get into the Marguerite and South Bend, we'll be doing that as well. Questions?
I'd just add to your comment, uh, it was not a question, but, uh, you also covered in the, uh, the meeting, the farmer's market, so...
Yes.
Because there, heard some concerns on that, how are we gonna get to the farmer's market, so, I don't know if that's been decided totally yet, but...
It, uh, when we met with Schwan's, he indicated that YMCA and Tom Bolling was in charge of that, and Schwan's would work with them, however necessary, to provide space, uh, whether it's back at the previous location of where it was, or at a different lot, or maybe staying where it is, because they do have access off of, uh, Marvin Schwan Drive. So, that's one thing we wanted to bring up for discussion, but it's something that they can work out and just kind of tell us what they'd like to do.
The other, um, consideration is, you know, need to be different, uh, detour routes for parades.
Yes, we have a couple of detour, uh, considerations. One is when we caught, across West College Drive with the utilities, that will have to be closed, that area, so there'll be a detour. We intend to do that in a very short period of time, but it has to be closed. We also have one fairly significant parade during the time of construction, that's the Sounds of Summer Parade, that will have to do some tweaking to the route, uh, and most likely, uh, being we're doing, um, uh, detouring through the area, uh, the parade route might have to be tweaked just a little bit before it gets to, uh, Main Street offline, make a jog over.
David?
And I was at the February 1st hearing, the community meeting, and I know this is standard procedure, so nothing new, but I was impressed by the, uh, attention to detail and the, you know, the ability to, to first to elicit comment from the residents, they weren't just sitting there being grumpy, but had useful things to say, and then your department's response to them, and also the, the alertness to the, um, possibilities of improving things. One small thing that certainly caught my attention is the intention to soften the curve there, just directly across from the firehouse. It doesn't have to be at that particular angle, it, it is by the path of the road that was laid out decades ago, but given that you, what you explained, there's some right-of-way cushion, we can make it a little softer, it makes it safer, so appreciate all of those things, particularly since this is, if you care to say, the central artery of Ward 2, so it's a particular impact on our residents in that area, and I appreciate that, all of that.
It really is a long-term, uh, reconstruction project as well. Uh, some of the major reasons for it are the conditions of the sanitary sewer and water main in the area. Uh, for instance, the sanitary sewer that comes up on the east side of Schwan's building, uh, that's on vacated South First Street, uh, was a, um, cast iron sanitary sewer line underneath the old railroad, if, uh, some of you have been around long enough to remember the railroad, and, uh, that, we can't even get it, go through there to clean it anymore. So, it's, it's not only time, it's imperative that we do that. And in working with, uh, Schwan's, uh, there are a lot of things, too, that are kind of unique to this part of the project, in that it does go through a section of their property that feeds all their services, their main electrical feeds, their main, um, uh, access for utilities, comes in that side that we'll be digging under, or through, or, or past. So, as well as that green space is sprinkled, and typically, uh, we, we don't like to pay for private installations on public rights-of-way or public easements, but in the case with this one and others along here, not just Schwan's, uh, where we're relocating the street itself, we certainly have some responsibility for the sprinkler systems that are put in there on city right-of-way. We do promote the people taking care of their, not only their lawns, but the boulevard areas in front of their places, so we're asking every property owner to provide us with maps of the utilities that they have placed on public right-of-way as well, and that's normally not given out. When we do a one-call, this is, this is citywide, when we do a one-call, it's for public or private installations on, uh, on the public right-of-way, but the neighbors never get that notice. The, the, the residents never get that notice. You know, MMU gets it, and VAS gets it, and, and Gas Company gets it, and all those kind of companies get it, but we've, we understand that, and we'll be contacting every property owner about that. So, that's the project area, and, um, it, the intention is to have a three-lane section, a lane going each direction, a center-left turn lane, and retain the parking on the west side of the north-south piece of Saratoga Street. That's the intent.
Any questions on, we'll take these one at a time, on the Saratoga Street reconstruction?
Glenn, um, I really appreciate you having these open meetings and communicating with the citizens. Is, is that something that's required, that normally cities our, our size do, or is that something we do that's special?
No, it's not a requirement, it is special in our area, and we think it's one of the most important things. All the rest of the things that you'll be acting on are requirements, and these meetings, especially this public informational meeting, is something that we set up several years ago, and, and really does, um, make the public more comf- And really does make the public more comfortable with the project. Both, they know about the timing, they know about how the project is intended to go. And then, as we go along, and we bid the project, and we get a contractor, we can take those comments and issues up to the contractor before they get to be an issue. Not that there won't be issues with getting through your driveway and things like that when your, when the utility is coming by your home, but at least you know about it. Communication is really important on these things.
Well, thank you for everything you're doing.
Any other questions for Glenn? If not, entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Motion by John, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to vote. Motion passes. And then the second resolution would be related to Marguerite Avenue and South Bend. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is similar. We haven't started the process of the public informational meetings, but that will be one of the first items that we talk about. It is reconstruction of the utilities through the area. And as you can see, this is the area to, adjacent to the two mini-parks that the private property owners operate and maintain. While not a part of this project, we will be discussing that at the public informational meetings as well. But this is reconstruction of pretty much everything. There are some locations where existing sidewalks were placed partially on private property, that will be taken care of in the project. They're in bad shape anyway, they'll be replaced, but we'll be placing them all on public right-of-way. We had the area surveyed, so that we have installed pins on both ends of the project, and there are existing ones periodically. So, we pretty much have determined the public dedicated right-of-way. So, that's something that we'll be discussing with the property owners as well. Another thing we ask people, especially in the residential neighborhood, if you need to do something with your driveway, or your sanitary sewer service, or anything within the construction area, now is a good time to consider it. Because the contractors will be in the area, you can have your own contractors do your private work, but it's a consideration when you go through the area. That's all I have on that.
Questions? David?
Glenn, I'm intrigued that we're treating and doing the rebuilding work on two parallel roads, but not the connecting roads. So, I infer that what we have on Camden and Southview are in good order, don't need to be dealt with.
Not at this time.
But does that imply that some of the, although, say, radiating or parallel roads, like for example, James Avenue to the northwest, northeast, would that be in line for the next project, perhaps?
It could be. What we try to do is work with the Public Improvement and Transportation Committee on the establishment of our five-year capital improvement program. You should know on a regular basis, except if there's emergencies, when projects are coming. So, it starts with five years down the road, and four, three, they work their way up, year after year. So, in those instances, you'll take a look at your five-year CIP, and generally, we try to get them on there.
Do you know offhand if those?
I do not.
Oh, okay. All right.
Any other questions for Glenn? If not, entertain a motion on the resolution for Marguerite and South Bend.
I'll approve the, move the approval of the resolution for these projects.
Second. Motion by David, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. And then the third project is the resolution related to Michigan Road and Superior Road reconstruction.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one is kind of a extension of a previous major reconstruction project we did at the industrial park a few years ago. This is in the Schwanz Industrial Park area, and you can see the extension of Superior Road on the western side that connects into previously constructed concrete pavement. Michigan Road from Superior to Hawn, both of those streets are in significant disrepair. I mean, they're heavily used by semi-trucks. It's time for the replacement of them. There will be utility reconstruction for Water Main on Michigan Road as well. MMU is paying for that reconstruction portion as well. So, it's an assessment district. We'll be meeting with the owners there too, just like we do with the residences. We'll probably, it'll probably be, probably a smaller group, because there aren't too many owners along that route. But it's a, it's a complete reconstruction of that section, and changing from bituminous to concrete. And previously, Schwanz had requested specifically concrete on Ontario Road. We're anticipating the same request.
Questions on this project? Craig?
So, Glenn, on this one, I know in the past, the assessment piece was a pretty robust percentage. Do you anticipate that being the same this time around, or is the new litigation going to take play on here?
Okay, we have two separate things here. One is the project track, and we have an assessment track. And they go together, but they're separate. And so, in our current policy, industry and commercial do pay 100% of the appropriate costs. So, none of the sanitary sewer replacement, none of the water main replacement, none of the storm sewer replacement, but the remaining portion then is, in our policy, 100% assessed. It certainly is going to be a discussion point when we discuss special assessment policy. But we always tell people what the current policy is. We also tell them that there's a possibility that that participation could change. So, it really is a, if you drive up there and take, I would recommend that. Any project that we have that you see, make sure that you go out and take a look at and see what the condition is, and take a look at the neighborhood.
Any other questions for Glenn? If not, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number fourteen is to consider the application for temporary on sale local license for Southwest Minnesota Men's Chorus. It's April 28th. Are there questions about this application?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number fifteen, Commission Board Liaison reports, actually, mine have not met since we met. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Library Board met yesterday afternoon. I was not able to attend, but just a couple of updates. I know Carla and Michelle and Lou have been meeting, and the concerns and questions that have been being worked on, it seemed like they're well on path, and everybody's happy the payment things will be made monthly now to kind of alleviate some of that. They've worked on where there's been cost savings in the budget and other pieces in going along with our long-range plan. We will be looking like we're going to hire one more part-time worker about 15 hours a week, and as things go through, we're hoping possibly to, at a point in time, maybe be able to have enough cost savings in moving some of the, adjusting some of the budget items around, that we can maybe raise that to 22 hours a week. And then, also, the Plum Creek Agreement has finally been finalized. The county's actually signed it, and I think that item will be coming up to us at the next meeting for approval. So, that's it for the Library Board.
I'll just add one thing on the library. The, I can talk about this later, but I was able to participate a couple of weeks ago in the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten Program. They had over 20 of these young, young people that were able to award their graduation certificates.
Super readers.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Another example of a really great program that's going on at the library.
Yeah, there's.
And there's just been, there's other things going on with the foundation and some of
that, but I want, I know Michelle's going to be coming in front of the council with some additional information, and I don't want to steal a lot of her thunder. There's just an awful lot of really good things going on out there. I think we are so fortunate to have the staff that we have there, and Michelle has done an extraordinary job with leadership, along with Bill Cole, and just keep Bill in your prayers. He does a good job, and he's, he's just, he's just a great guy. So, it's really been a pleasure to serve on the Library Board with that, with that group of people, and I'm pretty blessed with that. Southwest Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission Group, we met at noon today. An awful lot of stuff going on there. The Board actually had a retreat almost two months ago now, and today, we shared some lessons learned from that retreat in the focus session. And we're really looking at getting, you know, dedicating our staff and volunteers with real responsibilities that are clear, and then having them held reportable. And again, it's, it's developing good tournaments, it's developing good activity, it's working, recognizing that we support both our community involvement, but also the convention and Visitors Bureau work, which is heads in beds and meals served, and all the things that we're, that we want to support within the community. Darren reported back with the CVB. There's an awful lot of non-sporting things that are starting to really get traction out there with the expo in March. The last thing is going to be the figure skating show. On Sunday, they'll have the glass already off the boards for that show. As soon as that's over on Sunday, they start the process of taking ice off. The following weekend, the expo will be converted to the Marshall Radio Home Show, which is now newly located at the expo, which pretty much doubles their space from its previous site. They're anticipating a lot of possible requests to be in attendance of that with some of the larger outdoor items, because it's both a home garden and outdoor show. So, they're actually looking at doing a second event there that's going to be working with Action Track and another company out of Redwood Falls, and doing kind of an RVA-TV show. So, that's picking up. Of course, Prairie Home Hospice is going to do their second event out there in April. Avera's got their Night of Elvis, that's, I believe, in April. There's the Second Annual Community Concert in May. There's Pool and Darts Tournament in September. Just a ton of things going on out there. It's a little bit thin in the middle of the summer, because, A, we're kind of a mobile community on the weekends, and in the nice weather, people just want to be outside. But, excuse me, it's, it's really starting to get moving. And I don't know if you've seen some of the things that have happened, but Alec and our public access TV have done some phenomenal things. And one of the things, I know it was forwarded by Darren, and Sharon forwarded it around, but if you saw that Squirt A Tournament with the Hutchinson and the New Alm Sleepy Eye, one of the Hutchinson players' dads is deployed overseas and has never seen his hockey player play hockey, and was able to watch it streamed live, and the kids did a salute. So, pretty cool. And I'm telling you that that place is getting talked about a lot, even bigger than just in the state of Minnesota too, just with the, kind of the regional thing. So, nicely done to everybody that was involved in developing that. But Alec, nice, nice, nice job with what you're doing out there, and with the whole public access television piece for us. So, that's gone good. Maha's pretty happy with the way the concessions are going too. I think we, I think we did good there. They had to put a lot more into it up front to get started compared to the Lockwood Motors Arena. We're not sure what the P&amp;L sheet looks like, but they're going to just absolutely kick the volume from last year. I know all the suppliers are happy, Schwanz is happy, Reinhardt's, everyone is on board with it. So, we're hoping that that's a good example that makes our concession solutions easier for the ball complex too, moving forward. So, there's, there's a lot of positive things going on there. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
It's a good segue for me. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Studio One falls under Community Services, and that hockey game you talked about, that's a service that we provide through Community Services, through Studio One, that is not only Marshall, it's worldwide. I mean, like you said, that guy had never seen his kid play hockey. And so, Alec, go ahead. We're going to show you the magic of it. There it is.
Saluting, saluting his dad.
Who's watching from Afghanistan, Studio One, and you can do it on any computer, any telephone, anything. And again, hats off to Alec, hats off to our Community Services. It is amazing. You go out there, and they have a full studio to teach out at SMSU, and it's now a combined interaction between the city, SMSU, and the high school to bring all this together. Community Services is also taking this, you know, whether you like, hate, or are indifferent about the Red Baron Arena and the mistakes that we've made as a city, and the lessons we've learned. CAM is actually really putting this out. How many of you saw the curling that went on? CAM figured there'd be 20 people there. There was over 100 people there. They now have two full curling leagues that are going on, and they're talking about getting curling tournaments in here. So, that's another thing to use. And that quickly becomes national. I mean, it's like roly-boly. You'll get people from all over the country coming to Marshall to do this. I have a friend who is from Glencoe, he's a doctor there, and he lives in Orono, I think, and he came, and he personally said, "This is the best hockey arena he's been, period", and they go all over the state. And that includes my home area of northern Minnesota, which I am proud to now say that we outdo northern Minnesota, which is where hockey was born and bred. So, that's something to be very proud of, so I'm very happy about that. And that is just a great thing that Community Services is doing, and the changes that we're doing now, just exciting, very exciting. So.
And it's cool with the curling, because I drove through Chaska last night at about 8:15, and the Chaska Curling Club was going. And to see that there, and the excitement that's with the, with the Amateur Sports Commission and the curling, they talked about the fact that when the end of hockey comes, that they're, they're planning that session, and they were, how many can sheets can we, how many lanes in between the two rinks? And that's exactly what they're talking about. Maybe not, you know, not this year, obviously, but they're starting that, planting that seed for next year, so.
Curling is a gentleman and gentle ladies game. You don't need to be the top rock athlete to do it.
So, what you're saying is, I got a chance.
You have a chance. Exactly. And you can do winter curling and summer golfing.
I've run into a lot of people who have commented on the curling, and obviously, you know, my wife is from northern Minnesota, she's been around this for 30 years.
Yeah.
She always jokes, it's the one sport you can actually be good at and drink at the same time.
We don't support that necessarily at the arena.
I never said I support.
Would that's anything more, Steve?
No, sir.
Thank you. Glenn?
Planning Commission meets tomorrow night. Housing Commission met yesterday, and one of the major items we looked at is that we reviewed the 2018 capital fund program and the one-year and five-year plans. And what that involves is trying to plan out capital expenditures for the next five years, and we look at replacing certain amount and number of doors, carpet, light fixtures and so forth, so that's what's involved in that. And on Monday, March 12th, 2018, at 3:30 PM, at Parkview Apartments on 202 North First Street, we're going to have a public hearing. And the purpose of the public hearing is to look at the annual plan and the one-year and five-year CFP plans. So, if anybody's interested, come to the Parkview Apartments on Monday, March 12th, at 3:30. Thank you.
Well, I've got to say, I'm a little disappointed. Mine didn't meet, so I don't have all these good things to talk about, but everybody else did so far, so.
You want to borrow some of my notes?
That's all right. David?
David?
With, um, all the Olympic rivalry in the air, Steve, I, I look forward to sending you up north of the border to convince the Canadians that hockey began in Minnesota. And maybe after a couple of Molsons, that might work better. We'll see. Uh, P I N T meet on, uh, two days, on Thursday, the fifteenth, for a couple of minor items. None of those big, exciting things Glenn keeps teasing us with, but maybe that'll come in time. And Airport met, uh, last week on the sixth. Um, a question for you, Glenn, uh, we have the minutes a month behind in the, of the airport in our packet. Uh, have we heard anything yet from Helena Chemical? Any reply from our October seventeenth message?
We have not.
It, would it be in order for us to follow up with an inquiry?
We've been, we've been cautious to follow up without pushing and, and I, I think we've got, they have the impression we're gonna keep pushing them, but we had that discussion in staff a week ago and yes, it'll be a gentle nudge.
Okay, and if I, was it October seventeenth or November, I think October? So, that's been going on four months.
Well, there have been other inquiries.
Well, okay, the, but the one mentioned in the, in the minutes was from that earlier date. So, when, when would we be contacting them? Pardon?
This week.
Good, thank you for that. That's all for now.
And Jim?
Um, mine, uh, meet this week. I have, uh, Marshall Community Center tomorrow and Area Transit on Thursday.
Very good. We'll move then to Agenda I of number sixteen. Just Councilmember Individual Items, um, Greg?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
I've got a couple.
So, I know, it's, it's surprising. So, there's a couple of things. Number one, we have some areas for improvement on number one, Law Enforcement Center. I'm gonna give you a personal story that happened to me and it's always good when it happens to a city council member. Sunday night, we let both of our dogs out. I've got an underground fence. One dog came in, I figured the other one was just taking a sweet time. After about an hour, I asked my daughter, "Where's our dog?" Started a two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour look for our dog. He was gone, just gone. So, I've got an upset daughter who's bawling, can't find the dog. We're thinking he ran away. Actually, we thought, "He's getting kinda old. He went under a tree and died somewhere. We're gonna find him dead." Well, I called the law enforcement center at about, eh, twelve fifteen, twelve thirty at night and got the dispatcher and I said, "If you happen to find a little fat white dog around DeShepper Street, you know, let me know. And have you found anything? Don't know about anything, we'll let you know." So, the next morning, we get up, my daughter slept in our entryway, waiting for him to start scratching, so she didn't get any sleep, I didn't get any sleep. On a whim, we went out to the Dog Pound and lo and behold, there he was. And I looked at the time on the ticket, he'd been picked up at twenty-two hundred hours. So, two hours after I called, or before I called, he'd already been picked up. And so, the question is, how do they report and how do they do that? Because that would've been an easy thing. It may not seem like a big deal, but to a lot of people, pets are family. So, it was, would've saved if they would've said, "Yeah, he's, he's caught, he was on Robert Street, which is where he was. Okay, I understand, I'll let him stay in jail and we'll bail him out tomorrow morning." That brings up, so we gotta figure out a way, when I called and tried to figure that out, the answer I got was that the dispatchers aren't our city employees, they're county employees. That's still, it's, I said, "Do they report it? Yes, they report it, it's uploaded into the computer. It would've taken five seconds to access and look and say, 'Yeah, you got it.'" So, that's one thing. While I was out there, it's twenty dollars, I, I, they don't take cards, so I went and got money. Seventeen dollars, so we need to look at our cost because seventeen dollars odd and they don't have any cash to make change. So, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And one of the things I noted, and you'll like this, Councilmember Lazinski, the car out there, the truck, the C S O truck, was running for the entire time. There's nobody sitting in it. So, we're sitting there, we buy these new cars and we talk about wear and tear. The heck. Two-and-a-half hours using gas and I'm sure it was longer. It's burning gas, sitting there doing nothing and I don't understand why a vehicle needs to run all that time. My car, I got a brand-new car, you sit down, you push the button, it starts. So, that was one of the issues. And then the third issue is snow removal from sidewalks. We've done a good job. I noted that after we just.
Before you go to the third issue, on the, the first two, Sharon, would you follow up with the staff on those?
Sure. Thank you.
Can I speak to, to then?
Sure. Let me finish the third thing, then you can speak on that. Snow removal from the sidewalks. After we brought up that thing on the two-inch limit and we should do it, I walked at the last snow, we had Independence Park on my way to work, pristine, it was beautiful. The school did not have any shoveling done there. Sidewalks were completely coated, as were a couple of businesses on the road. So, I think we need to be more enforcing of that because it's kind of a big deal. So, go ahead, Mr. Yant.
And again, you know, Rob, you can address this, but it's probably something that the staff should discuss also.
Yeah. And I apologize for your frustration. As a dog owner myself, I value dogs and I wanna know my dogs are safe, so I under, empathize with what you're doing or you're feeling. I mean, that's the starting point. But I guess the second thing, and, you know, in terms of the process with dispatch, you know, I guess generally, they do a good job, they get a lot of calls, they're our gateway. They are county employees and it's not being flip about it, it's just, and we don't get a lot of complaints, but when we do, we take them to their supervisor right away. I know you, depending on the schedule of the dispatcher they follow through, they say, "I've talked to him and I know in this instance, he, he apologized." He, the dispatcher, he said, "You know, it was a crazy night, I wrote a note on the side and I was just swamped and I forgot to go back." So, again, not an ideal outcome, you know, expectation, but, but again, we have a good relationship with the Sheriff's Department. They're usually responsive when we've got an issue within the frame and, uh, did, we've, I've had a couple things, not big things, but again, if I get feedback, um, we communicate and they're good about getting it back. I guess the only two things on the money, the one is, we weren't allowed to keep a cash drawer and on why it's seventeen, I guess I don't even remember. It was maybe fifteen at one point. We did a three percent increase or something, went to seventeen. Yeah, we could round that out. But anyhow, the other thing I had mentioned it to the administrator on Monday with your concern and it was from previous finance director that just didn't like having cash out and about, especially in a intermittently staffed building.
But you end up with cash nonetheless because of.
We do, but then what they do is they turn it in and.
Sure.
You know, yeah, so anyhow, but that's something we, we've talked about. I know she talked with Carla to see if there's something going on. I guess my only caveat, and on occasion, we do have vehicles running, but it's not, they're emergency vehicles, but our C S O is less of a responder. Saturday's weather was not the weather where we would have that done and not for two hours, assuming it's.
I would, I would, I would argue, Rob, that a C S O would never need to keep his vehicle running, ever.
Well, it, don't, they're busy. It's the only thing I can say.
Sure.
And for the time, well, the guidelines is, if it's zero and if they're gonna be out of the car, like, cause they'll take half-hour breaks, much longer than half an hour, unless it's on scene. On scene, they'll keep them going, but again, it's with zero. We weren't that on Saturday. The only caveat to explain this is, this was this, this is a newly hired, part-time C S O. Saturday was his second day and his main gig is working for North Memorial. And what they do is drive diesel emergency vehicles all the time and they never shut them off. So, I think it's a training issue with this, that I think he, I'm driving a government-marked vehicle, we leave ours running all the time, I leave them running. I mean, I don't know, I haven't talked to it, you know, I just, uh, but.
Why don't you follow up on that policy?
But, but I will follow up and like I said, that, that wouldn't be our normal process and I think that was the circumstances. So, uh, and the other things, again, I think we'll, we'll work through the administrator on them.
Rob, could I offer a thought? The, um, I don't know beans about the technology, but there's a new device called a Square, which even nonprofit organizations are integrating, uh, into their sales, like Cub Scout popcorn or some packs are using these things.
But you know what that.
Well, yes, we've had, indeed so. We've had discussions about this in our pack for receiving credit card purchases at the front door. And I don't know about the cost or the, you know, there are some other practical considerations. It might be something to look into, or at least to visit with the administrator out there. If, if there's a steady number of people who would use a credit card if available, maybe that's something for us to look at.
Yeah, and between three of us.
All, all things that could be discussed, yes.
Thank you.
Rob, your answer should've been that, uh, since his dog's like family, you want it to vehicles warm and comfortable when you pick them up.
Dog has a fur coat.
Oh, you spoil your dog.
I know.
Oh, well.
Anything more, Steve?
No, sir.
Thank you. Glenn, anything more?
No report.
Jim?
Um, couple of things. I brought this up last year, I'm gonna bring it up again this year and now it's something for the administration. I sat, you know, we sat at a, a town hall meeting with Senator Doms and Representative Sudinsky and it brought, brought up last year. I think that's something we should even bring down to our local level, you know, and I'll use example, Craig and I are in Ward Three, is that, you know, take a meeting out of this council chamber, you know, sit at the library where people feel more comfortable, where we can visit with the citizens of Marshall. I don't think we do that. It, it came up today during, uh, the task force, you know, Dennis and I were going back and forth about public meetings. I said, "Well, we had it, but people aren't there." I think people get intimidated at this setting because there's a T V, there's the paper, there's a, you know, folks around it. I, I think it'd be good for us to set this up, you know, set up to have one on Ward Two, one on Ward Three, one on Ward One. And obviously, as the mayor, you can visit with every, all of them because there's still only three members at that meeting. They hear what our citizens have to say. They get them more involved in government for him, for them to put input into the special assessments, where they're not feeling so intimidated. I, I would really like to see that implemented this year, so as we get into the budget, they can put in input. We have the same folks, you know, we always have Dr. Alfalter has no problem giving input and we appreciate that. But I, we need more input from more of our citizens and, and that's something I would really, really like to see pushed this year.
I think, I think.
So.
Yeah, and I think, good point, Jim, and I think the other, um, challenge in what we discussed last year is, uh, some of our new populations, how, uh, we can encourage them to also participate. So, many times we hear from the same people.
You do and it's just, get it out of an intimidating situation where we have a roundtable. This, when, when I was younger on that side, this isn't intimidating. We're, we're set up on a pedestal here and it is intimidating for a lot of people.
Well, see cats like us, huh?
Any else, Jim?
Well, the other thing is, I know Steve brought up the car running and that, that is a pet peeve of mine. I'd like to see these shut off. Not only is it wasting gas, my insurance tells me it's a huge, huge liability. They have told me if they catch me with my running that it could affect my insurance rates because with that car running, the keys are in it. Uh, you know, the newer vehicles and nicer ones do have push buttons, but I'm assuming that the C S Os, I know we cut the bunch, his keys are hanging in that car. He's inside that building, you come outside, that car's gone.
We, we took the cranks out and sold them for the windows on your recommendation.
So, and that's fine. I, you, you're lucky we have crankwheels, but I do and that, and that's a big, as we wear these vehicles, oh, that's a big thing. And my employees say, "My vehicles do not run," simply because we don't wanna get them stolen, simply because it costs money.
Did I come up and ask, I guess looking for.
Sure.
Policy items on, because.
Right, and part of it's with them, and again, realizing the C S O isn't an emergency vehicle, but again, we want them, they do the car unlocks, they do traffic control at accidents, they deliver agendas, which again, it's just mixing things in. But the guidelines we generally use are, uh, and again, this is more for squads than for the C S O vehicles, but, uh, if they're gonna be, normally their breaks are half an hour, so they, if they're running them for half an hour or on scene and it's zero degrees, they leave them running. And the two things they're looking at, the one is the windows, time it takes to defrost the windows if you've got something urgent going on, and the other is the electronics, the computer and stuff.
Yeah, I'm not just picking on your department. This is C Y, I, you know, not that I take note of, but I do look at vehicles running, it's like that pickup doesn't, like I says, not just police officer, it's, it's parks department, it's street department. It's, a vehicle shut off for fifteen minutes is not gonna cool off.
Yeah.
So, again, I think Sharon, that can be policy that can be discussed with staff.
Other than that, I just look forward to having our meetings with our citizens.
David?
Uh, two things. We had a meeting February first, several of us were at, uh, put on by U Cap to, uh, in, inform us how U Cap, United Community Action Partnership works since it's had the merger with the neighboring organization to the north and its footprint has expanded and some, how the services are now delivered. It's very useful to hear that run through, um, and, and to have a better understanding of the, of the wide variety of things they do in this community and where the money comes from, mostly federal, some state. Important to understand those connections and also, of course, a, uh, Ward Two institution. So, uh, glad to be there and be part of that. Second, I put an item, or asked for an item to be placed under your informational, um, portion of the packet near the end of the agenda that talks about the, uh, activities of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. You hear me report about this from time to time. I'm a member of the board. Um, we have, uh, just had a, um, the agenda you see there is from the conference call that our board has periodically and we had one last week. We have, um, uh, Advocacy Day coming up next month that I'll be attending and talking about issues that affect our cities in greater Minnesota with legislators. But I, I thought it'd be useful for you to take a look at that agenda because of the heavy emphasis on activ, uh, action items, the coalition is pursuing regarding environmental regulations affecting cities and, and other jurisdictions as well, things that have to do with wastewater treatment, uh, some of the things we've talked about here, upgrades of our facilities, dealing with, uh, some, some very heavy-handed, uh, regulatory steps, particularly at the state level, M P C A, but other things as well. Useful for you to just have an understanding of what those items are, uh, where, I've been involved on and off with that organization over maybe fifteen years and that was part of the mix fifteen or twelve years ago. Now, it's the, the thing we talk about the most often, the thing that we have to, to work to find resources for this city beyond the substantial dues that we pay each year has also agreed through your action in the past to, uh, su, uh, support a voluntary assessment to help pay for the legal and other costs of fighting these things. And, uh, they, they impose enormous burdens. The, the poster child example is the city of Osakis, east of Alexandria, which, what, a thousand people perhaps, maybe two thousand, which received a directive from M P C A that it had to undertake an eleven million dollar modification or upgrade of its wastewater treatment to achieve, uh, a reduction in one of the pollutants of one one-thousandth of a percent. But according to how M P C A read and, and imposed their regu, own regulations, none of this enacted by any elected body, that's on paper what the, the city with a tiny tax base would have to do. These things are wildly out of control. Frankly, as a hobby point, sore point of mind, I'm wondering where the, uh, this polite company, I'll say it politely, where the League of Minnesota Cities is on this. They have a broad-based membership organization, including the metro cities. The metro cities are in a better position to accommodate these costs and burdens and, you know, it's a hot potato, it's controversial. It might look like we're favoring greater Minnesota, we shouldn't do much with that. And likewise, where in the same location is the Association of Minnesota Counties. And the coalition is feisty, they like to fight and they fight on behalf of, of the interests of cities like ours. It's one reason I enjoy being part of it. And, uh, so I just wanted you to see that and have an understanding of some of the things we're working with currently. Thank you.
Thank you, David. John?
Well, uh, Councilman Stura brought up the, the U Cap meeting and even being on the board, attending the meeting, a number of things I've learned, uh, sitting in on that. So, if you do get an invitation, uh, for, there will be other ones coming up, uh, please, uh, try to attend as you can. I did get a request from, uh, a citizen, uh, vision impairment going back on snow removal, um, if it would be at all possible, I just said I would bring it up and just, if at all possible in areas, in this case, uh, probably along College Drive, um, where in areas, in this case, probably along College Drive, where the sidewalk is right up against the street and the plowing occurs and it ends up on the sidewalk. If there's any possibility of the plows being able to push that a little further, maybe with a blade or whatever, push it off and get it on the other side of the sidewalk, probably more in the business area. But like I said, I mentioned I'd bring it up and bring it to Glenn's attention if it's at all possible. Recognizes there's a lot of areas where there's posts and there's boulevards and things like that. But it seems to be the worst case is when the sidewalk is right next to the street and that gets the brunt of the, the snow, so.
If after the me, if you could get me an address, we'll check it out.
Thank you, John. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 17, staff reports, starting with City Administrator. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, to keep it real brief, three different items. On February 8th, I was invited to participate on a panel regarding women in traditional male roles. And it was a really fun panel. We had 60 attendees at that event and it was a higher-attended event. So I really appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit about the administrator role in the city of Marshall. I think it was a good opportunity for the city of Marshall as well. Today, a couple of meetings occurred. The Building Task Force is nearing its completion work in terms of forwarding recommendations to the LNO and Planning and Zoning Commission. So I think soon you'll see some scheduling of that. And I know we've, need to just work out a little bit of the process with Attorney Simpson on that. That should happen fairly soon. And then also, Councilman DeCramer and Councilman Meister, myself, Carla, met with some representatives from Lyon County, two commissioners. And what we talked about today was TIF. And I think it was a really good discussion. It wasn't so much for the purpose of getting agreement. It was more about awareness. And I think there was an appreciation of that. Just talking about what we've done in the past and it's a future project in TIF as well. And I appreciated the participation by the, the councilmen. So that's all I had. Mr. Mayor and Councilman.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of nice things that happened over the last two weeks were, we didn't have any incidents with the Super Bowl. Now, just so you know, we were put on notice two weeks before the Super Bowl for our airport being able to handle excess traffic from the Twin Cities area, or in the case of an emergency issue there, that our airport would be one of the reliever airports. So we needed to address safety and security at our airport over that two-week period of time and monitor and, and, and report any incidents that we think, would think might be associated with that issue. We had none. We didn't expect to have any, but it was still a process that we went through with, with the FAA and MinDOT Aeronautics. So everything went great. We had our, some presentations of projects. They'll continue to come over the next few weeks for various stages of that. That's all I'd have. If there's any questions, I'd certainly take them.
And any questions? Not Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Following Sharon's lead, just keep it brief here. Last week, I attended the Annual City Attorneys Conference for Municipal Attorneys in Minnesota. And it's absolutely the best conference I've ever had. And it was, everything that we're addressing here, I mean, it was right on point with other attorneys statewide, whether that's, you know, building inspections, manufactured home park inspections, our lupa, religious land use of, you know, religious buildings in, in zoning areas. We made the right mistake, not mistake, we made the right ruling on the mosque. St. Michael Elbertville is right in the middle of a $1.5 million judgment against them for failure to cite a church in a theater. That's after three years of litigation. So, and it was just, it was very good. And a number of things to bring back to staff.
Thank you, Dennis. Move then to Agenda I of number 20, the pending agenda. I'm seeing comments on the pending agenda items. Otherwise, Agenda I of number 21, the information items, including the building permits, as well as the item that David had brought to our attention. Thank you, David. Agenda I of number 22 is the upcoming meetings, which brings us then to Agenda I of number 23, to consider adjourning. I would entertain a motion.
I so move.
I second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.